All right, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Monday, September 30th, 2024. My name is Ty Minter, Chair of the Board. We have, we'll do introductions here in a moment. We have a two-hour work session with several topics. First up is Deschutes Estuary Restoration Project ILA Review, informational session for the Board. Public virtual attendance is available on our Thurston County YouTube channel. So, since we have guests from the project that's, that Deschutes Estuary Project, I'm going to just start with introductions around the whole table. Start with Vice Chair.
I am Vice Chair Wayne Fornier. I want to say, welcome back, Tan Robb. Gary Edwards, County Commissioner.
Pun Hernan is County Manager.
Dave Merchant, Assistant Attorney General.
Anne Larson, I'm with State of Washington. I'm the Project Director for the estuary restoration, so.
Hi, I'm Tessa Gardner-Brown, Principal at Floyd Snyder and Consultant Team Project Manager.
I'm Sarah Rich, Project Director with Echo Northwest and serving with the Funding and Governance Work Group, Facilitation and Funding Strategy for the Project.
Joshua Cummings, Assistant County Manager.
Rob Gilder, Assistant County Manager.
And then online, I know we have Commissioner Mahiath. I can't see the other, any of the participants? Only other participant? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Mahiath.
Carolina Mahiath, Thurston County Commissioner.
Commissioner Claus is excused for this session. So let's, with that, County Manager, you want to set us up for what we're doing here tonight?
We are excited to have the Deschutes Estuary Restoration Project team. I know that they've been doing a lot of outreach and just want to start by thanking them for their commitment to communication, clarification, and a lot of details, and this has been going on for quite a while. So with that, Anne, be happy to turn it over to you and the team for the presentation.
Just a time check, do we have about 30 minutes or so? Does that seem about right?
Yeah, 30 minutes to an hour.
I'll talk slow. Well, I just really appreciate all of you having us here today. So we're going to give you an update about the project and then also speak to where we're at with the funding and governance in the inter-local agreement. But before we begin, I just want to give some opening remarks. This is really a unique project. We're restoring an estuary in the middle of an urban setting, and we know this to be one of the largest in the nation, and that's really significant. We're really demonstrating that the natural and urban can coexist, and it's a demonstration that could be a model for the nation. This is also, this estuary is part of our Capitol Campus, and there's a lot of opportunities there. Because it's an extension of that, we can not only tell the statehood of Washington that story, but we can also tell the natural history story. And it's also part of a larger effort that you've all been a part of, and Tessa will talk a little bit more about that. There's a lot of benefits to this, both environmental and transportation. And at the center of it all, this really is about restorative justice, the justice to the Squawson Island Tribe. So I think it's important just to say how much of a legacy this is, both to our state and to our region. And so you've met the team. This is something where I guess we'll work session style, so feel free to stop us at any point to ask any questions. And today we're, oh, you see the topics there. So we're going to give you a context. I'm going to provide that. We'll give you overview of benefits. We'll talk about the ILA and then where we are in the process with the inter-local agreement. So do we have a clicker or is it? Oh, I don't care. Well, you can, I can just say next if that's easier. Okay, okay. So we can go to the next slide. Okay, so the slides, oh, next one, there we go. This slide deck, we've actually been using in public meetings and really to start the tone of all of our public meetings. So it's a scripted dialogue, but I really think it's helpful for folks to see this. So, next slide. So historically, fresh water from the Deschutes River would mix with salt water from Bud Inlet over expansive tidal flats. This area is rich with history and is the southern terminus of the Puget Sound. Next slide. The Deschutes watershed is approximately 270 square miles. The lower 260 acres of the watershed were significantly disrupted in the 1950s when the state built a dam at the mouth of the Deschutes River. Since that time, there have been chronic water violations, and sediment has accumulated up to 13 feet in certain areas. There are also more than, excuse me, a dozen known aquatic invasive species, or invasive species, including the New Zealand mudsnails, which actually caused the water body to be closed more than a decade ago. Next slide. There we go. It also has a longstanding cultural and spiritual significance to local tribes, in particular to the Squawson Island Tribe. The Squawson Island Tribe considers the people on the land of Deschutes Estuary a state trust. They have been involved in our planning efforts for this project since the 1990s and are key partner with us today. Next slide. The area has also historically been used by Chinese-Americans. Chinese immigration to Olympia began in the early 1900s. Chinatown was established along the waterfront of the estuary, and the community built a series of houseboats to the shoreline. This area was referred to as Little Hollywood, and it was ultimately removed as a long process to construct the dam. Next slide. The project area also has a rich marine history. The old Olympia Brewing operated the Tom Water Historical Park, and vessels would make their way up two miles from the waterway up to the brewery to the base of Tom Water Falls. Olympia Yacht Club was established at its current location in 1912, and the maritime presence has grown increasingly since that time. We have additional marinas, an active sailing club, and other boat launches nearby. In modern times, Capitol Lake has been embraced by the community. It is at the heart of downtown, and it's really a space for community and congregation. Olympia is also our capital city. The development of Capitol Campus has had a significant influence over the landscape over time. In 1893, the initial visioning began to design and construct the Capitol Building. In 1911, Wilder and White submitted a plan that would perch the Capitol Building on the hillside and orient all the future planning efforts to the views of the water and the mountains. Next slide. Heritage Park was designed as an extension of the Capitol Campus, and a lot of opportunities exist in that. There are features across the park that intend to represent the history from across the state to transition the experience to the campus upland. Next slide. In 2022, DES identified estuary restoration as the management approach that had the greatest range of benefits and was the most supported by our stakeholders. And so we began, together in this process, to re-envision the landscape. Next slide. And as we do this, we much, really must think about the rich history of this place. There's the natural history, the tribal history, the settlement community, maritime community, civic community, and our Capitol Campus. Really, our goal is to represent that history in a space and do it in a way that balances all of our shared interests. Next slide. And then what we see here when we look at this is that it's all unified by water. It's the history over time that's brought us to the water, from harvesting on the water, recreating on the water, crossing the water to either side. It's the water that really brings us together, and it's at the heart of Olympia. It's also the prominent view from our Capitol Campus, and that serves all of our Washington residents here today. Okay, next slide. I'm going to transition it over to Tessa, and she's going to give you all an overview of the project and go through some of the benefits. So, Tessa, please.
Okay, I'm just going to pause here as we transition into this set of material to describe that, you know, the inter-local agreement is ultimately a key topic of conversation today. And the inter-local agreement is one piece of the puzzle. There are many pieces of the puzzle here. This one is a very important one, but it is one piece of the puzzle. And it specifically comes into play with the last bullet here that I'll rest on after I go through this slide. But it is, it is a piece of the puzzle that is needed to round out the whole picture and to help this whole meaningful project move forward. So what we want to do is, after Anne has set the tone, I want to give an overview of the fundamental components of this project and then go into the benefits that are achieved by implementation of the project, to which the ILA is a one, one piece of. So the Deschutes Estuary Restoration Project is a two-mile project area extending from Tom Water Falls at the south end to the Fifth Avenue Bridge at the north end. And it includes construction of a new Fifth Avenue Bridge just south of the existing bridge and dam. And as that, and that new bridge will have vehicle lanes in both directions, expansive pedestrian space and, and bike lanes for commuters. As the new bridge is being constructed, there would also be a significant dredging event to re-establish the main channel of the Deschutes River. That Deschutes River channel has filled with sediment since the dam was constructed in 1951. It's about 32,000 cubic yards of sediment that deposit from the Deschutes River watershed into that river channel every year. And so during the construction event, we'll remove about 500,000 cubic yards of that accumulated sediment from the main channel, and we'll place that sediment along the shoreline. That's a really helpful thing for a couple of reasons. One is because when we place it along the shoreline, we can use that to establish new salt marsh habitat. That's really important for salmon species that benefit from the project and, and other species that the salmon depend on, like forage fish. That also, as we create that shoreline with increased ecological function, that improves the visual aesthetics for the users of the space, and it reduces costs. So it means all of that sediment that has deposited in the project area doesn't need to get loaded into trucks and taken off-site to a landfill. It would have to go to a landfill because right now, under its current conditions, there are more than a dozen aquatic invasive species in the system, including the New Zealand mudsnail. So we create a big amount of habitat and restore estuarine habitat. Recreation is also a really big component of this project. The water body that is two miles has been closed to public use since 2009. And the estuary restoration would restore recreation, so there would be boardwalks along the shoreline, new water access points for hand-carried boat and fishing. And we hear so much community interest in being able to have restored fishing within the water body. There's also a significant infrastructure component beyond the Fifth Avenue Bridge. So the Percival Cove Bridge would be replaced, and there are more than 70 outfalls that discharge into the project area. Those would be improved along with the utilities that, that span the three bridges that cross the project area. After all of that work is done, the Fifth Avenue Bridge and dam, the existing, would be removed to create about a 500-foot opening to restore tidal flow to the project area. In the future, after that tidal flow is restored, sediment from the Deschutes watershed would be able to move freely through the system and out into West Bay. And so in working on this project with enterprise services and with the local jurisdictions, one of the things that we have found importance around is making sure that the natural and the built environment could coexist, as Anne was describing in her introduction. And one of the ways that we can do that is by dredging, maintenance dredging, in West Bay after construction to maintain navigational areas so that recreational boating in the Port of Olympia can continue into the future in an estuarine environment. So maintenance dredging in West Bay is a component of the project after construction. That's the focus of the ILA, but really, we'll talk about how the ILA integrates much more into this broader project. Before I move on to the next slide, I should ask, are there any questions about the project components themselves?
On the invasive species issue, does this fix that issue, you know, the snails and the whatever else the problem is? Does this take care of that so that is no longer an issue if you put the tailings up and such?
Yeah, that's a good question. Let me answer it in two different ways. There are 12 aquatic invasive species. 10 of them would be eradicated as a result of the project. Two of them, purple loosestrife and the New Zealand mudsnail, the populations would be significantly controlled, but unlikely to be eradicated because they have some tolerance to salinity. But when we define what the issue is, the issue, as we define it, is the ability to get people onto the water. And so in working with WDFW, they have described that because the populations will be controlled and will have water access at specific points, they would support the restoration of boating, fishing, and other active uses of the water body with a decontamination approach. So that, I would say that the issue has been managed, and people can get back onto the water body when the population comes down as a result of tidal flow.
But we'll still have the concern of transferring that species to other water bodies. So we'll have to have something.
And that's why the decon is part of the, exactly. That's why we have to commit to decon.
So there would have to be some type of mandatory decontamination process for anybody that goes in and out of that water?
That's what we understand right now.
What does that look like?
Well, it, it can look like a number of different things. And in areas where they can really, where there is WDFW staffing, they'll use hot, hot pressure, pressure square with hot water. Of course, that's not something that we want to give access to everyone in the public to. You can use specific chemicals. And so what WDFW has said is that once we get into 60% design, which is in 2025, we'll work together on the right decon solution. And in Marathon Park, this is the area for water access where boating would be supported. And so because boats can only really come in and one, in and out in one place, it's reasonable to assume that, you know, you bring, you bring your kayak up, and then there's something set up here. So decon is actually feasible. And the reason why we think that is feasible is because it's going to be tidal flats, right? So people aren't, because of the softer sediment, aren't going to be able to walk around in all the locations unless we've supported the substrate. So that's why we think that it's a good solution for them to kind of come in and out in that one location.
This is going to, and, but then there's still, I mean, there's threat of these things ending up in other, other lakes.
It, it is possible. It is possible. Yes, if.
Don't they attach to birds, birds' feet and stuff like that? Doesn't that have something to do with the spreading of that particular species? The small, you know, the small migrant organisms that get started before it turns into a quinone or whatever it is.
You know, that's a good question that I don't know. I, I could, I can't see why they wouldn't, but I don't know the answer to that question.
How about the ongoing cost of dealing with this solution? Is that figured into the financial plan at all?
Yes. So what we'll talk about today is that in terms of geography, from the new Fifth Avenue Bridge and south, that cost is, will continue to be the responsibility of the state and other entities. In terms of the cost that everyone is coming to the table together on, that is the maintenance dredging in West Bay, and Sarah will go over the projections for that cost that's allocated across the group.
That would affect, say, the.
No, so the state, the state is taking, no, that's a great point. We've, we've got some initial cost estimates at 30% design, or excuse me, 15% design. We're getting to 30%, so we'll have more refined cost estimates at the end of the year, but that is the state's responsibility.
Just a quick follow-up, but I'm not sure it's applicable to where you're going right now. But is there a true financial plan about the breakdown as to what local government, and, you know, I'm concerned about the county's participation, and how that will deal with, okay, so maybe this isn't part of it, but all the rest of it, whatever that percentage is, is there a plan there that is laid out that it's going to be X number of dollars the first year, the second year, the third year, taking into consideration the reality of inflation and that type of thing?
Yes, and we're, we're going to get into that. You're, you're.
Okay, thank you.
You're leading us right into some great topics, so thank you for that.
And, and, yes, agreed. And know that the maintenance of this stuff is, is not.
Not you.
Subject to the locals, and so that's really going to be talking about the dredging in West Bay.
The project area is really separate, and so the construction and the overall maintenance within the project area is something that is not included as part of the ILA. So, great question.
In terms of cost, yeah, yeah. Okay, so let's go to benefits now on the next slide. Oh, okay, we have a couple renderings for you. Yep, that's great.
Pretty pictures are good.
So this is existing conditions, looking from the Capitol Campus down into what we refer to as the North Basin, and then out into the area that will be subject of this long-term agreement, the port and the marinas. And in the future, with the estuary restoration, it'll look like what's shown on the next couple of slides. So you can see, I think it's just going to be easier if I get up. You can see the shoreline habitat that has been constructed and the new shorebirds that we anticipate returning. You might have seen that through the lake drawdown that we had in July. And on the next slide, it shows the low-water projections, and I'm just going to go through these pretty quickly. This is the middle basin, so just north of the I-5. And under most tidal elevations, it'll look like this. And on the next slide, we have the low-water elevation. And then this is a rendering of the new Fifth Avenue Bridge. And really, we have intended this to be a signature bridge design that is a, a bridge physically and metaphorically, and helps to provide a moment of pause in this pedestrian area to look out onto the estuary, to really experience the, the water body, and to look back onto the Capitol Campus and the Deschutes watershed at large.
And that's the 500 feet you're talking about there of tidal flow?
About 500, yeah.
And I think it, it's worth pointing out, do you want to talk about the Oculus too?
Yeah, please.
It's, it's really exciting when we start to think of the opportunity here as this being a bookend to our Capitol Campus and extension of our Capitol Campus and all the opportunities to maintain that recreation around the space. And so right now, we have a lot of folks like stream teams and other, like educational folks that actually go to the, the dam and bridges to look at the salmon. And of course, those are all at a pinch point, right, when they're coming up the ladder. And so here becomes this great opportunity to do some education about salmon. And we have an Oculus, so it's a hole in the bridge done at the largest part of the channel where folks can actually look down. It brings you closer to the water, stepping down in more of an undulating way to get you closer to the water to watch the salmon. So there's so many amazing opportunities to do education, to really create a place of gathering, to bring people closer to the water. And the views are fantastic because you're looking back over at the Capitol Campus. So it is that nice bookend mirroring back. So it's a really special.
There's going to be two bridges, two new bridges, right?
No, 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 the other bridge is already, that's the new one that was built after the earthquake.
And that's going to stay in place?
That's right. It's the Fourth Avenue.
Where that stays.
And that's wide, it's wide enough?
Yes, yep.
It is wide.
Fourth Avenue is wide enough, and then this will be the new Fifth Ave.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, you're, you're going to just point out the other expectations and connectivity and.
Sure, totally. So you can see Sarah's pointing out that we will construct as part of the bridge, a new roundabout that connects between Fourth and Fifth Avenue. And right now, if you are ever coming down Fourth and you want to head south, you can't do that. And so this provides a really cool new traffic operations that, there've been some modeling done by TRPC about the benefit of keeping people out of downtown and giving them more of a direct route down to the I-5 interchange that happens near Tom Water Historical Park.
And then another piece of that, which is just critical to the region and also City of Olympia, is that's a real safety issue there. We've shown that that's a, because of the way that the intersection is, that it is a place that is not very safe, both for pedestrians and for vehicles. And so what you see here is a separated pedestrian path where folks can still go around the future estuary. But then what you're not seeing, because we don't have the refined detail, but it would be separated bike and pedestrian access actually on the road. So you have more of a plaza-type meandering path around the estuary and then sidewalks that are separation from vehicles. So now you have a safer place to recreate. And if folks have ever taken a walk, I, I walk it pretty regularly with my little doggos, and it's pretty terrifying when you go across where the dam is at. It's a single-file line where it's just not a very. It's a single file line where it's just not a very safe environment. So we're really creating something that's both cool.
One other thing, you said that you can't take your watercraft out because it's going to be muddy and that kind of thing. Is that area that you showed during the low tide slide, a few slides back, is that going to be solid enough that people will be able to walk on it? Or is it going to be prohibited from having access? Like, I think of kids getting stuck in the mud.
Let's go back about Fourth slide.
Like outer mud bay, right? Very similar.
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Keep going. You can pause there. It's a good question. So we, during the lake drawdown, we took some tests of the sediment. And in the North Basin, it's pretty soft. And so to make the water access work, we will provide, put additional aggregate down to enhance the ability to walk on that area in the Marathon Park so people can take their kayak or stand up paddleboard in and out. We don't want people walking on this habitat because we're trying to restore the habitat.
Maybe clam beds and different things like that will develop.
Exactly, yep, exactly. So what we're going to do and what we're working on right now is figuring out, we're calling it a water access point for this location that might be like a stair step-down situation where there's like different seating places so that people have, you know, they're going to want to get close to the water. We don't want to restrict them for that, from that, but we'll make it special so that they're focused there.
But don't you want to still restrict the, if there, if there's still the invasive mudsnail in there and you've got to have decon procedures for entrance, for exiting the water, wouldn't you want to restrict?
Yeah, exactly. That's another reason. So those steps would stay above the water. It would just visually get them much closer to the water so they could feel like they're kind of out in this habitat space without being on the sediment for the reason you just described.
It's being very purposeful to just bring you closer, so it's a great, great point.
All right, we can go back and I'll, I'll transition. So then this is an aerial view. I think we can continue to advance from here. And then we have one more, I think of the Oculus on the next slide. Oh, and this is, if you're in a kayak, what you might see. Oh, wonderful, thanks for that feedback. Yeah, the arches are intended to have a similar design, but a different way of interpreting, interpreting the arches from Fourth Avenue. And then here's that Oculus that Ann was describing. And so we're still, of course, working on the materiality of this. Don't, don't take the railing as this is what the railing is going to look like. We're going to work with artists to, to really refine that.
And as you can see, you're looking back over at the Capitol Campus. And so it really becomes a great place of pause where there's so many opportunities to really showcase what we're doing there. And you have places to sit.
And just, I, I think everybody realizes it, but one of the purposes of it is to create a shadow in the water. So you're looking down, you can see in the water in that Oculus.
Okay, let's go to the interlocal agreement. So we're going to transition a little bit and it's going to start with a discussion of benefits. So I'm going to take this slide and the next slide and then pass it off. And I'm just going to stay here. We have been using this imagery in a lot of our recent presentations because we, what we think it does is show a really good job about the connectedness of the project area. It's two miles here outlined in blue to the larger region. So connected by land, connected by water, connected by space. And when we implement this legacy project, there are a number of benefits that'll be realized. The first, actually, and the connectedness of this space has been something that has for years brought the local jurisdictions together. We, Thurston County has been a key partner in this project since 1999. So we're 25 years working together, Thurston County with the cities of Olympia and Tom Water, with Lot, with the port, with Squawson Island Tribe, and with the state. So the 1999 timing was part of the Capitol Lake Adaptive Management Plan. That's when Thurston County and all locals first came together to really figure out and set into motion the, the planning process to determine the long-term management of this resource. You all have been with us through the environmental impact statement on the executive work group, the funding and governance work group, and the technical work group, and have been contributing in all of those ways through the planning process that began actually in 2016, but then the EIS was initiated in 2018. And that's really a recognition that this space is a resource to all residents of Thurston County. Related to that, when the dam is removed and we restore two miles of that estuary and habitat, one of the things that we talk about is the salmon having freer access to 40 miles of the Deschutes River, which of course makes its way through much of Thurston County. And the flood elevations will be, removing the dam reduces flood elevations in Olympia by up, up to one foot. And it's a critical step in sea level rise resiliency for downtown Olympia and the county at large. The dam removal is the only way to address chronic water quality violations in Bud Inlet and it responds to the ecology issue TMBL. That's pretty important for Thurston County too, because Thurston County discharges to the Deschutes River and to Bud Inlet under the municipal stormwater general permit. And you have a number of sand and gravel aggregates that have individual permits that are also authorized by ecology. So if the dam wasn't removed, then ecology figures out how to manage water quality by going to the other permittees. So that's a, an important nexus for the county. Recreation too, we just described that this would be a recreational resource to the region, just like Nisqually, for example, so important to being, being part of the sound. Ann described that the project makes strides towards restorative justice for the tribe, which I think we all have a good and intend to increase our relationship with the tribe and has been a result of these regional, this regional collaboration that I just described. So the long-term maintenance dredging, that's the focus of the interlocal agreement, is one part of this project. And that supports an ongoing recreational waterfront that generates economic activity for all of us. Excuse me, I need some water.
On, on the sea, sea lion problem that we have today.
Yep.
Where, you know, it's just kind of a feeding area at the dam. So how does this fix that from continuing? And, and you mentioned the tribal influence. I believe if we'd let the tribe do whatever they think they need to do in dealing with the sea limit, sea lion, it'd probably solve the problem. But I don't know if we've got the will to do that or not, so.
I think that's a bigger problem.
What is, what is the solution?
Yes, it's a good question.
Solving that problem?
So what happens under existing conditions, the fish ladder that Ann was mentioning, it's nine feet wide. So that's a conveyor belt. That means that all the salmon running back into the Deschutes watershed go through a nine-foot area. And the marine mammals sit and pick them off as, it's like it's a buffet line. It's just like salmon buffet line.
For them to.
It's happening right now, so.
And so what we'll do is by creating that 500-foot opening that Commissioner Edwards you were pointing out to us, that reduces that compression point so that the salmon have more ability to navigate through that opening and it takes away the buffet line entirely.
Well, except it's up here now. It's near I-5.
This, this, this is a wider opening as well. I need to get the, the width of that. I don't have it, but it is wide enough that it doesn't provide a compression point there. There is some possibility that we could see some marine mammal activity up here at this fish ladder. We're not quite sure how that's going to evolve in the future, but that would be a transit up, pretty significant shallow water. So we'll have to just see how that evolves in the future.
Do you think they could get there?
Oh, they'll go mile, you're like, they've been found in.
Both the Columbia and, but, but water depth.
There is a solution. You just shoot them. That's the bottom.
No, but like they, they will go.
I don't know if you've got the guts to do it or not, or allow, allow the tribe to do it. They would do it. But that's, that is a solution. I'm not saying, I'm not recommending that.
It's not my role.
No.
It gives the fish a sporting chance. Just moving the salmon from one area to another area.
It is part of a, a bigger, bigger conversation that the state has, you know, looking into about.
We could talk about things forever, but maybe not fix the problem.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, we can't make that global, a bigger global, but.
Okay, so you don't have a long-term plan, really?
Please do not take a gun out there and start fixing.
It'll be something that we'll continue to coordinate with WDFW. It's, it's something that we're all.
Okay.
Taking a look at.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so let's, let's move forward into one last slide and then I'm going to transition it. So I described that all of the locals have been together in this process since 1999 trying to figure out what's the right management solution for this resource that has been pretty messed up since the dam was installed. And the legislature has compelled DES to continue to focus on a long-term government, funding and governance strategy. So in 2015, when funding was provided for the Phase 1, they required DES to bring these entities together to figure out the general support for shared funding by state, local, and federal governments. In 2018, when money was provided for the EIS, to which Thurston County signed a letter of support for advancing into an EIS, that DES must consider the use of equal funding, which we are, we are not proposing that, but must look at that. And then finally, our recent provisos required DES to advance the MOU for funding and governance. And that is the discussion topic that we'll transition into now. So over to you, Sarah.
Thanks, Tessa. Any questions before we jump into that?
I just, like, one thing you don't say, because it's, we're kind of past that point, but it's probably important for this discussion is like, the, it's not like the, it's not like there was a not do anything option. I mean, we've all sort of agreed, we're going to do something. And of the three major options, the one that actually unlocked the most environmental benefits was also by far the cheapest.
That's right.
I mean, when I came into this process, I was pretty sure that the estuary was going to be the right, you know, decision environmentally and for all the reasons, but I wasn't sure about the cost. And I was nervous about that because if it turned out it was going to take, cost a lot more to manage the estuary, then we'd have to convince a lot of people who might not be, you know, who, for cost is their number one priority. I breathed a big sigh of relief to see that it was going to cost a ton less money for the community to do the estuary solution versus the other two proposed solutions. So it just became kind of a no-brainer. I mean, there was no, I mean, no matter what side of the fence you're looking at this from, what, what glasses you've got on, this is the right way to proceed. Now, that doesn't mean the ILA had to be one way or the other, and there was still a lot of negotiation to be done, but in terms of a, a long-term goal. So I think it's, it's worth reminding people that there wasn't any other cheaper way to, to manage the issue that we had, that everyone agreed had to be managed in some new, you know, different way.
Yeah, and I think it's worth noting even to the impacts to Lot. We're looking at issues related to sea level rise and what that would do to impact Lot, which is a really, like, not doing anything, that's not an option. But also, as Tessa mentioned, the whole water quality issue, I think it's like worth just highlighting that again if you want to speak to Lot and the impact to water quality. If we were to actually move Lot because of sea level rise, that's a $1.5 billion impact to move it. And that is an option, but the water quality, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think we all have to rest on that $1.5 billion quote of moving Lot. And this project helps to reduce the pressure, the urgency of the sea level rise impacts to City of Olympia. The issue with the water quality is that if the dam is not removed, then all of the permittees that discharge into the system get more highly regulated. So everyone that is, is regulated and discharges into Deschutes River and Bud Inlet, ecology has to work with you then to figure out how to improve your water quality discharge. Lot is a big player in that game, of course. And so they would be more highly and more quickly regulated into providing additional water quality treatment that is on the order of many, 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 many millions of dollars. And so that's why Lot continues to be at the table too, because as Commissioner Mensah was saying, that when we look at it across the table, it does end up being the more, the lowest cost option is, is moving forward with the estuary. It provides direct benefit to them and that they avoid having to put that treatment online as soon as they would have otherwise had to.
And we have many Lot Ray players that are county residents in the urban areas, like me, for example.
How do you, how do you answer a question, you know, somebody says, well, if the dam's the problem and waterfall is the problem, just open the dam, leave it open. You know, and why does it cost so much money to just remove a dam and you want to restore an estuary? Water flows, it restores itself. Leave it alone.
Yeah, there's.
Take it out and let it naturally solve itself. What, what's the answer to that?
Yeah, so there's a couple, okay, so in, in this scenario, people have asked, just raise the tide gates. And the tide gates are 80 feet. So the, the dam is comprised of an 80-foot tide gate, they're in two sections, and 420-foot earthen dam. So in that scenario, there's a regulatory issue in that you would not provide the water quality flushing that is likely needed to restore all ecological functions. And that goes to some of the points I was just mentioning related to salmon, water quality, kind of other, some of the other environmental impacts. Additionally, in that scenario, what you'd see is those 500,000 cubic yards of sediment that have deposited in the main channel of the Deschutes River, coming from the watershed, flushed downstream into the marinas, the port, and that, that West Bay system, they wouldn't be handled. And so what would that do to the downstream set of resources that provides this vibrant Olympia waterfront and the Port of Olympia and their commerce? And so that's a scenario where dealing with that sediment is actually really important, not only to improving the environment in the estuary, but also to maintaining the downstream uses. So that's a, a key component of the project. And at some point, the dam and bridge need to be maintained. I mean, it's coming up on 75 years old. And when we look at, you know, design life, that's right when you're starting to get areas of vulnerability. So if we're going to have to replace it, it should be placed, it should be done well. So those are some of the high-level reasons.
Yeah, and I think it's just, let's go back to restorative justice and the tribe. It's also that the tribe had compelled the state to have a long-term plan and that, that's, that's, this isn't a long-term plan, that's, that doesn't create a long-term sustainable plan. And so they were part of the EIS process and the only way we were able to get to that long-term plan was to do the estuary restoration, which in order to do the estuary, estuary restoration, we got to remove the dam. In order to remove the dam, we need to construct a bridge. So all those are, are really well-linked, but it's a great question.
Makes sense.
A lot of folks just want us to pull the plug or get the dynamite out.
I've heard dynamite.
Got to be a little more careful about.
Dynamite, dynamite and guns today.
West Olympia would still like to eat some.
All right, any other questions before we move into the meat of the ILA? All right. So in about 2016, the Funding and Governance Work Group convened based on the direction in this 2015 proviso. And it began with this group here on the right. And so the Thurston County was at the table from the beginning. And you can go to the next slide. And out of that, the initial conversation meeting, it came a set of guiding principles that the group created for the process going forward. And so you see these here, and the ILA where we sit today is really rooted in these guiding principles that they established in their, in the earliest work together. The structure of the ILA directly reflects many of these. For example, it provides a dedicated funding source, which is number one on that list, not only for the long-term management that Tessa described, but it also outlines through the governance of the other project features, how those would be maintained in the long run. And I'll get to a little bit more of that in a minute. It provides a shared distribution of costs, balancing between the state that created the problem and the state is taking over the lion's share of the costs of the total project. And then those, recognizing that those other entities around the table really benefit from the restoration in all the ways that Ann and Tessa have described here. So as I'll go into in a minute, it does provide manageable governance, which was another factor that the group was looking at. And in manageable governance, they explored lots of different options and they've helped us to walk through the legalities and the realities of the different ways that that could have looked. And then importantly, through the funding and governance process over the last six years and via the ILA, the participating entities are committing to a long-term collaborative process. They have committed to this long-term collaborative process in, which is in direct response to the legislative mandate here, the call for, for that. And that collaboration is so important for continuing to bolster the momentum towards funding and implementation of this project. So when Tessa mentioned that this ILA, it addresses the, kind of the, the last long-term maintenance question, but in doing that, it allows the momentum to continue towards the, the larger project, because it tells everyone where we'll end up in the long term.
I saw you had a, you had a question percolating, so let's pause for a minute.
Well, on your bullet points, two, you know, who created the problem? That's the state. They made a determination to do this in the 50s. They made a determination to do this in the 50s. And in the process of doing this, they felt it benefited everybody in the state, not just those folks in Olympia, but when they came to the Capitol campus, they were going to have this, the aesthetics, if you will, that this was going to create. And then you talk about, three, who benefits from it? Really, yes, there is some local benefit, you know, I'm not denying that. The problem is, the state also benefits from it. I mean, we're doing this, it was created to benefit the state, and I think the fix is to benefit the state. And I don't have any objection to Thurston County residents paying their share, but I think the Benton County residents should be paying exactly the same amount towards that fix. And granted, the state is picking up the majority of the funding of fixing this problem. But the problem is, they've got an ongoing fix that's going to continue. And I feel that the state residents, whether they're in Spokane or, or here in Thurston County, ought to all be picking this up. We're going to be about $15 million short in our budget this year, and the state never has addressed the real funding source between municipalities and counties. That just wasn't addressed during the Growth Management Act in its original implementation. They were always going to do it, but they never did. So we will never have the source of revenue that most municipalities have. Actually, we're required to provide service for 150,000 people in Thurston County, and that's about the same amount that live in the municipal areas. But they have twice as many dollars per resident as we have to provide lake service. So that's always been my ongoing objection. I think the sea level rising and flooding and all that, I, that was the part I got briefed on early on, and I might add, a very convincing brief, did a good job. But my concern for the taxpayers, to me, has not been fixed, and that's my objection to this whole thing, is I want Spokane to pay the same amount. When Hanford started the cleanup process, because of federal activity over there creating the bomb, which they felt they needed to do, they didn't come back to Benton County and say, well, we're going to do this, but we want you to do this much more. The feds picked it up because it was a national problem. So we participate, somebody from New York, they participate. And I just think it's a fairness issue that I have not seen this addressed. And when you come up with a memorandum that we agreed to a few years back to move this forward, all the way back to 99, and then maybe when it really got going in 16, I can see where it was valid for us to be participating with you and come up with a solution. But I don't think the solution ended up being fair. And so when we signed to move forward with it, it was about continuing to explore solutions. So for me, I mean, I'm, obviously, I don't know how my seatmates are going to vote on this, but I can't support shifting the burden to just the local folks paying taxes. I want Spokane paying the same amount that some rural resident is going to pay. And recognizing the benefit, two and three make sense, but the causation and the repair, if you will, hand in hand, they're both the same.
Kusar, oh, go ahead.
Can we just-
Is it a related point?
Yeah, yeah, I kind of, like, I, I, like, after a meeting with Ann and, like, hearing more about this, and I, you know, I'm still wrestling and trying to figure out the different elements of this, but I'm coming late, very late to this discussion. But like, what, what you had said, it almost kind of feels like that is the way it's set up. And so, you know, when they talk about the shared distribution of costs, Ann and I talked about, you could even create a hot map where it is red-hot, closest to that area, and they're paying the most taxes if they live in the city, they're on Lot, they're in the county, they're in the state of Washington. And then you get further out, you, you contribute less to this. And like, when it was explained to me that way, it, it, it kind of, it, it made a lot more sense to me. And there's federal money coming in, so there are people from Buffalo, New York that are paying into this. There's a lot of state money coming in, so there are people in Benton County that are going to be paying into this. And then, and so there's, there's so many different funding elements to this, but the closer you get to the area, the more you're putting into, you know, you're putting into every pocket that contributes to this. So you do pay a lot more if you are a City of Olympia resident that is on the Lot system, a Thurston County resident, a US citizen, you know, a State of Washington citizen, and then if you, you know, you live in Benton County, you're not paying into Lot, you're just paying into the state. So it does, in a sense, I think it does kind of exist, exactly how you were saying-
And connected to that point, somebody made the argument, well, the port should pay for this. Well, if the port pays for it, the way that's taxed, Thurston County residents are going to pay a lot more.
And well, and then the port is another one, that if you're in, if you're a part of the port, so they are all-
That's not the argument you wanted to make.
-paying into this. And if you're in all of those jurisdictions with, if you're living downtown, or you're living in the South Capital neighborhood, you are paying into the port, paying into Thurston County.
Why, yeah, the residents, I don't hear the residents, like, flowing in from South County saying, why am I paying for the port?
Oh, I do. There's a lot of people who say that.
I do, I do, too.
Because it's the Port of Olympia, it's not the Port of Thurston County, so that-
But, but they still, but that's-
So there's a lot of that that come, that come, but we've tried to work to make that a more equitable, you know, service.
Same argument that's, people without kids talk about paying into the schools.
Why am I paying for the schools?
Same thing. So, I mean, it's there, and I respect that point of view 100%. It's just, I'm not there, because I'm, I'm going back to the Benton County and the nuclear facility, and the need that that had to take place in the 40s. And it did take place in the 40s to benefit everybody, and Benton County is not picking up part of that nuclear cleanup. But they do have a benefit, because all, all the wages of those folks living and the property tax and all that. So I see where you're talking.
Just real quick, I'm the time manager here. We're at 56 minutes, and I know you guys had something you wanted to say about this conversation.
Just real quickly, so-
We only get this time with you.
Yes, I appreciate it.
We can argue later.
Well, and I-
And we will.
And you actually stole some of the thunder, you know, the state, which I love.
Sure.
You know, the state, we are taking up the hundreds of millions of dollars in construction, and those would be realized throughout, those are state monies, those are paid for by our state taxpayers. The other thing, too, is, as you mentioned, we are going after a really aggressive federal grant package strategy, too. So we need to have a diverse capital stack, which would be a lot of federal and state monies that are going to be able to take care of this, too. When we think about the long-term management, that's a lot smaller of a number. We're not talking hundreds of millions of dollars. So if you look at the percentage, I know one of my wonderful colleagues would be able to come up with that right off the top of their head, the state is paying more, like, an enormous amount of money, how much is it?
70.
97%-ish about this, and so-
I'm not arguing that, I think you're right.
No, and so, but you're bringing up an interest, and like, the hot heat map kind of is an interesting idea, the closer you are to this, to this, the, the more that you're going to be paying, and those are rippled out to people in Benton County and also to your-
And if we had the same tax base the city of Olympia has, I'll just say, put it that way, you probably wouldn't be hearing this from me. But the state never stepped up to it after the Growth Management Act was enacted. Oh, we're going to come up with the next solution here, in the next session or the session after that, which they never did. So it comes down to how we service our public. We have half as much money to service that same amount of people as Olympia has to do, to service their folks. So if that was fixed, which I've participated in the Ruckelhaus studies, where it was trying to get fixed, and they couldn't come up with a solution that they were willing to move forward. So I'm just, I've been around here forever, my younger seatmates, I don't hold it against them. And they've got a good perspective as well, so.
I've got it on my list, fix seals, fix GMA.
The part that I'm also interested in, and I know you, it doesn't necessarily help sell a, you know, a vision, is just the cold, hard cash that is coming into this community if this goes down. I mean, that, that's, that's an element that I think people that under, that just look at numbers can understand, and it, you're talking about, you know, I, I forget, how, what, what does the total project cost? It was something like half a billion dollars?
Yeah, we're looking, rough estimate at like 350 million right now. We're still only at conceptual design, so 15% design, but then you think about the project that's happening with the port and the remediation and the amount of money that all of these projects collectively, including the city of Olympia, sea level rise, the improvements that they're making, we're talking about a substantial investment in our region, which has rippling benefits, economic benefits to everybody, so.
So anytime, I, I feel, anytime I can go to Washington DC and take half a billion dollars and bring it back to our region and create jobs with it, if it's an estuary or a bridge or I-5, that's, that's a huge amount of economic benefit in jobs and money.
It's a big multiplier.
Yeah, that comes, you know, so our investment of $100,000 a year is budget dust compared to the half a billion dollars that can be put into this economy through this project.
I guess we don't even have budget dust.
And that, you know, like, you know, you, you talk about restorative justice, and you talk about making fish happy and stuff like that, and that's how you, I mean, that's, that's one element to this, and, you know, just the cold, calloused, you know, write-a-check element to it might appeal to Commissioner Edwards.
Well, that's why I was bringing up the, the cheap, you know, on the other side of things, it's also the cheapest way to get to a solution. So that saves us money, and then you've got, on the back end, what you're saying, you've got a lot of slides left, so.
I know, I always like to say, I, I heard you, timekeeper, so.
Let's get going.
Yeah, but this is a, it's great to just say all of this and like to understand, kind of, you've brought up some really great points, and so let's get through this, and if we got some more time for some questions, that'd be great, but go ahead, Sarah.
No, you can switch to the next slide, where we outline the approach to shared and manageable governance. The intent after, through the discussions really was to not create an entire new level of bureaucracy to manage this thing, but to slim down as much as possible. And so the governance of the project, as Tessa walked you through, the, the infrastructure elements of that that will require long-term maintenance are being pieced out to the jurisdictions that naturally would have, makes sense to maintain and own in the long run. So for example, the city of Olympia is taking ownership and long-term maintenance of the bridge once it is constructed. And then Tomata will take the board lots, as we talked about earlier. Fish and Wildlife will maintain its responsibility with decontamination stations, whatever that ends up looking like. So those pieces of the future cost of these infrastructure improvements are, are not subject to the long-term governance here that we're talking about in the, in our local agreement. It really is just the sediment management costs that need to be, the sediment management activities that need to be managed and then paid for.
I want to just pause. So going to the, the box of the state, of the state here, we're going to be doing BATHIs, we're going to be doing project management, we're doing fiscal management. So the state is taking all of these, what we're calling soft costs, we're taking that in, we're not including that as part of any of the ILA at all.
Costs.
And those are, those are, those are real costs that are, that state is going to have to be asking for as part of our budget ask each year. So the state is also paying into the ILA as a partner around all of the jurisdictions and fiscal management, project management, BATHIs studies, we have, the state is also Fish and Wildlife, they have decon stations. We have a lot of things that the state will be doing into perpetuity for the project that go outside of just the construction side and are on and above the ILA, too. So I just wanted to say that before you move on.
No, and I'll say just one more thing that really made this work, and that's Thurston County's contribution of the local account treasurer function. You all will be managing the local accounts, and that was a, a piece of the, the puzzle that we ended up having to figure out to make sure that the legislature could not sweep local funds. So the agreement creates a local account, where all of the local entities will be contributing. The state monies are separate in a, in a state account. And then, and I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but then the marinas will also be contributing. And when you have all three of those accounts active, the money separated, they all have to come to the table with money there to be able to access any of the independent funds. And that, when the commitments are there for each of the accounts, then the work can move forward. So you'll see here, can you switch the slide, please? That the, the slide on the left, and I know many of you have seen this, the slide on the left demonstrates, shows the sediment deposition with the dam in place. You can see that sediment is transferring through the system, passing through the system, and depositing, and the port and the marinas are responsible for dredging under, you know, and, and have to dredge at some frequency now. Under estuary conditions, you can see with the darker reds there, that sediment increases through the system and really concentrates in the area of the, the marinas, right in here, and then the port vessel berths, right in here. So this is why we need to, this is what we need to manage. And as I'll get to, as you can see, here's the marinas. The Olympia Yacht Club has to be dredged approximately every six years, and then the other areas here-
As is, or after?
After. The dam is removed, and then the other areas here would be on a frequency about, of about every 12 years. This is important because we take into account the responsibility and the cost that the marinas currently have, and they will continue to bear that response, that cost responsibility. So that's where the marina contribution in that third account is important. And we will be continuing conversations with them to determine exactly how that works, but it is in the, in our local agreement that that will, that responsibility will exist. Can you switch to the next slide? Okay, so we've already really talked through this, but I think the key point that I wanted to, two, two key points I want to share on this slide. First, this interlocal agreement, it has a defined end date of 2050. That aligns with the leases, with the marinas have with DNR. And it provides, in the ILA, a, a point at which the group needs to come together and figure out what comes next after 2050. But there is no ongoing responsibility to this agreement at that, you know, after that date. And then the other piece we really talked through is the overall distribution of these costs, and you can see, again, that the state takes on a responsibility for design and permitting, which is where we are now, for construction, and that will be, you know, leveraging federal resources as much as possible. And the tribe is a really important partner in that conversation and in bringing those monies to the table. I'll also say that having this ILA as a piece of this is going to be critical in demonstrating the local support. And I've been preparing with Ann a lot of the grant applications, and that is just one of the things we continue to see feedback on, the partnership with the locals is such an important part of securing those federal dollars.
Just to pause on that, coming back from DC just two weeks ago, and then going back in another, next week, actually, it is so unique, the partnership that we have to have the counties, the cities, the tribe, Lot, and Thurston at the table. And when we're sitting in a room with decision, permitting and decision-makers, congressional folks, this is so unique and it's compelling. It's really, really compelling to see this regional support towards regional investments that's really historic and a legacy in its own nature. So it's exciting to have this, this doesn't happen very often, so thank you, just thank you.
Yeah, those federal funds are very competitive to get them, you know, there, there's a lot of applications there, and this, we keep hearing is a differentiating factor that allows our project to rise above the others.
And I, we should have said, we received $6.4 million already from NOAA for design and permitting. The next round is coming up, where I think we're even equally as eligible, if not more, because we've shown so much progress in the work that we've done. So more federal money's coming into our, our region.
Yep. We're almost there, $6.5 million in the baseline sediment management for the marinas and the port, we mentioned that. And then this is really what we're splitting across the, the members of the funding and governance, with several exceptions, that we are explicitly, that the entities around the table explicitly put into thinking about equity. And one of those is 50% increase for the city of Olympia because it's closer to the benefits that the project would create. It is right there at the, you know, back door of, or front door of the ports and the recreational activity that happens and makes Olympia a vibrant maritime city. And then the tribe is not taking an allocation for equity and restorative justice reasons, but like I said, they are at the table, trying to bring in those federal funds, particularly that are reserved for the tribes. And our, our $6.5 million from NOAA was a tribal reserve grant, so they've been an excellent partner in bringing those federal funds through.
I want to be one of those excellent partners like the tribe.
Okay, last slide here, and then we'll move to our thing. You'll just need to, apologies, slide this box over here with your eyes. So-
The numbers are the same, though.
Numbers are the same, yep. So what this slide shows is the bottom line for you all. These numbers come from the sediment management cost estimates that were in the 2022 EIS. The base, base of that has not changed, the only adjustment to it is to add a 4.5% annual inflation adjustment, and because we recognize the, the uncertainty in the future of where these costs might go. in the future of where these costs might go, and the, the ILA specifically has provisions to revisit that assumption as market conditions evolve. So the ILA will allow, if that ends up looking too high, will allow adjustments to the total annual payments for that. So I think that that's all I'll say for time, and we can switch to the last slide, or we can take questions.
Like, like I kind of said earlier, if you, if you were to come to us and say, hey, we need, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year to get 350 million dollars for a giant construction project, you know, for a grant, and that's the contribution, I mean, that, I would be like, yes, that makes sense. So making an investment to have some massive construction project in our region, I, I, that resonates with me. It's, it's gonna be, we have, we're gonna be looking under couch cushions to find money, like, that, that'll be the next battle, is do we even have the money to have that discussion?
And I guess we can say in response to that, that the, the obligation doesn't begin until the project has secured funding, so you probably have a few years to.
So if that money doesn't come from the feds and the state, then this isn't even a, isn't even a thing?
No, you don't write a check. If it doesn't come, you don't write a check. So if it, it's until we have sufficient funding to enter into construction, then that calendar year is when the first check is due, and the, and then we annualize that, or we figure out the annual payments through 2050.
There also seems to be like, you know, we've got all these other lakes in the area, and this is just one lake, and there's other lake management districts, and they, all these lakes have their own issues, you know, like there was a mill here 100 years ago, and now there's all this woody debris that is causing algae blooms, and so like, they've all got these issues where man came in and did things that they shouldn't have, and so, you know, there, it seems to be some folks that are, why, why isn't my lake getting this, this love and this change? And I, I guess maybe the answer to that is, you know, all in good time, and this is where you start, and this is, this is the lake that has the most attention, the most support, you've got all these different elements behind it that are willing to make it happen, and so, I mean, is that?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of momentum, but there's, there's, those lakes, I can't speak to them, but I mean, this is a regional issue, like I said before, it's a legacy issue, and we've been trying to fix this since the 1950s when we put the dam in and messed up ecological conditions, and so we started to see that into the 1970s, and we are committed as the state to hundreds of millions of dollars to fix the wrongs that we did, and also, which is important to that restorative justice piece of it as well. So, you know, we're looking to do construction 2027 if all goes well, we got a $26 million asked to the state legislature and also federal monies as far as timeline, and then it would just be, because it'd be great to end on that last slide, just to show, next slide, too, just like how far we've come. I mean, we started this in March, we were like coming off of the MOU discussions, but now we've brought this into an ILA. This is amazing in the short amount of time, and I think it's important for folks to understand how intentional and deliberate that we were. We would have a public meeting, which was open to anyone to listen to, and then we would bring it back to the different entities to talk about specific Thurston County issues, specific city council issues, to say, okay, how do we address those in the next round? And then we take all of those problems and air those out to the public to say, okay, let's talk about this now. We're gonna have a big meeting with all of our funding and governance folks, all of the entities around the table to speak to that as well. So we've tried to be not just transparent, but also intentional to have these broader conversations and then really focused conversations. And so here we are, September, this is pretty exciting, a short amount of time because of, you know, being a part of these conversations, I just want to say thank you for that, thank you, you know, for our folks that are sitting out around the table, we've made a lot of progress, and all of this is momentum to get us closer to funding and those federal and state grants that we have, so. But I think that's, we've got one more left to go for the city tomorrow, and I think we're set, we've got signatures on some, some of them already, so it's exciting to be where we're at.
Thank you guys for your time, we are out of time.
I got cut.
Appreciate you.
Can I ask, do they have signatures for already?
The port, Squaxon, DES, Lot, and I think we're waiting on the city, because we.
I think we're still waiting on Lot, but they.
Oh, we had our presentation.
Next meeting, yeah.
Next week, sorry, didn't mean to speak for you then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys. Sorry for being so long.
And the state does claim ownership of the lakes, I just want you to know that.
It is our lake. Future estuary.
So we have Experience Olympia and Beyond next, and is that?
Good job, you guys, really a very good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Thank you for all your good questions.
I'm gonna.
And that is meaningful.
The advantage of not being first as well.
Okay. When are we going to have a follow-up conversation between us about this? Thank you, guys. Do I need to request?
Yeah. I do, I have a more item for the signing, but if you want to have a separate before, like, we can do that.
When is the date?
If we're gonna put it on the next meeting agenda.
Tomorrow, then tomorrow.
Two weeks from tomorrow?
Right. You have something in between if you'd like.
Thanks. Okay.
I mean, I've sat, I've sat through a thousand meetings on this, so like, I don't really need any further discussion because I've been, I mean, I've, like, I've seen that presentation right there a dozen times or more already, so.
Sure.
I'm only, I'm the Lot president, I'm, we're dealing with it a lot, and I'm on the, I'm on the funding and governance work group, and I'm on the, I was on the executive committee for four years, so I'm knee-deep in it, but my, I absolutely support my seatmates if they wanted a session of any kind.
I've been knee-deep in it, I just.
I don't know if it's gonna affect anything if we were to have another half hour.
I was just wondering what the next steps were, and did you answer that? Yeah, so I thought maybe it was gonna be.
We'll prepare an AIS.
Okay.
We can encapsulate certain things, like Wayne makes a good point, we can call it the Wayne effect.
Yeah, he's.
You know, it is, it's, there's a lot of.
New options, yeah.
All right, who's for his back? Annette, welcome. Experience Olympia and Beyond.
Yes, sir.
New term, Wayne effect.
You're up.
Okay. So thanks for letting me be here today. This is not a presentation with an ask at all, it's just a project update, and some of you will have seen this before, but I just wanted to make sure, since it was such a significant part of what we've been doing for a while here, that you guys were fully aware of what the project is, why we did it in the first place, and then where we're going with this thing. So, the first thing I, I want to say is, you don't start a project like a tourism master plan, also known as a destination master plan, without a reason. It's a massive undertaking with an incredibly large amount of opinions and thoughts and feelings amongst the people who participated. So I want to talk about why we did it, or what problems we were trying to solve, talk about the process that we went through, who was there at the table, what we're going to do moving ahead, and then how, if the county would like to be involved, that you can do so, and then answer some questions.
Where are those nachos from?
That's 23 kitchens.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know, and then you can get a big pint with it. Okay, so why did we do this thing in the first place? So the first thing is, so I came into this role in 2021. I found one of the first things that was in place when I got here was my predecessor had went through a process called a D-Next assessment for Thurston County. It's an industry standard measurement process where they bring this consultant in, they create a very large survey, and they have a whole gaggle of variables that they measure your performance as a destination on. The feedback that was obtained from that initial D-Next assessment and the follow-up one that we did in 2021 is based on stakeholder sentiment, so that's the first thing to note. This was not a visitor survey, this is, this went out to people like you, people in the community, and they were asked, tell us what you think about these different variables, and I will tell you what the variables are on an upcoming slide. So when I came in, this had already been done in 2016, and the contract was two-part. There was already a to-do in that contract, to do it again in 21, to see if there had been movement, if there was improvement in perception from 2016 to 2021, and unfortunately, the findings both in 2016 and in 2021, bless you, were that Thurston County was found to be weak as a destination, and also weak in terms of its community alignment, which was not really the most fun thing to hear, you know, when I first came into this position. Community alignment is really important in this piece because you can't, you can't just, not only can you not affect change on the symptoms of problems, but you certainly can't affect change on the root causes of problems if you don't have a coalition. So kind of like the folks that were here talking, it's taking all of those different folks to be involved, those different organizations to come together and to solve their problem. Well, what that survey said was, you guys don't have that alignment that is needed to move the needle on some of these issues that you're being measured on. We also were kind of operating on what the industry, the tourism industry would consider to be a pretty dated model at that time, meaning that we were really very much marketing-only focused, meaning we were holding up the megaphone, we were telling folks, hey, here's the great things about our community, come and see us, come and visit us. But there wasn't necessarily a mechanism in place to obtain feedback, both from visitors and residents, we, we hadn't been really talking to our residents historically. We talked to some stakeholders, but we didn't say, hey, retiree down the road, what do you think about this thing? Hey, visitor, you came here, tell us what you think about this thing. And then when we found information, there wasn't a mechan, a mechanism in place to say, uh-oh, we found some results, and we need to share this with the people that can do something, because we know as a visitor bureau, if somebody says, I have a beef with Capital Lake, think it should be an estuary, there wasn't really a, there really wasn't a mechanism to say, here's what we found, and here's the right person to receive that information. So we knew we needed to change that, and that's called a destination management model rather than just destination marketing. We are under no illusions that we're managing this destination, let me be clear, it's an industry term. We were still at that time, back in 2022, we were still rebounding from lost hospitality and tourism jobs, so we knew we needed a mechanism to start addressing that, and this plan basically gave us a Trojan horse to say, all right, we know we have an issue, both in terms of destination development and in terms of having a coalition in place of the right people to be at the table to solve these problems. So that was why we did the plan. Does that all make sense first? So the first question folks inevitably want to know is, what were these variables that they measured us on? And these are the destination strength variables. Read them all out loud to you. And then when it came to community alignment, these were the variables that we were measured on, and our stakeholders in the community said, I don't feel like these are strong enough in their current iteration. So most of you who have been in a presentation with me at some point in the last couple of years will have seen this slide. It's probably the most important thing I can tell you about our approach to tourism as an organization and for our community. A lot of folks reasonably, when you ask them about what is the job of a visitor bureau, they'll say, well, it's to help people find good vacations, you know, bring them here, get them to have a fun vacation with their family or whoever they're traveling with. And that is a, a part of what we do, but the real goal is to serve our community and to help be a partner in delivering community quality of life. And the way that we do that is by working with our partners, that's that community alignment piece. What this graph tries to tell the story of is that if you build a place where people want to visit, then you are going to build a place that people want to live. If you build a place that people want to live, you will have built a place where people want to work. If you've built a place that people want to work, you'll have built a place that people want to invest, and if you've done that, then again, you're gonna have a place that people want to, to visit. How that ties into this plan is that we know as a visitor bureau, I can't, I can't serve or my organization can't do that, bullet number three, building the place that people want to work. The folks that can are, say, our jurisdictional partners, like yourselves, like the Jenicas and Joshes of the world, you guys can work in community development and say, oh, Annette, thanks for this pile of data, these are some of the issues that we're working on, and I see that this dovetails nicely. Or it might be the EDC, it might be the Thurston Chamber. We try to find different partners along this cycle, once we get findings in place that we can serve this to, that they can actually align it with their work hopefully, and start treating some of these root issues. Does this make sense? All right.
You know, the Wayne effect will help you as well.
Wonderful. I'm here for it. What is the Wayne effect precisely?
It, it is, it fits right in.
What is the Wayne effect?
Oh, what we just got done, you know, talking about in his analysis, so this project, it's gonna be good for the community, it's gonna bring people in. I mean, hey, I can make an argument for it myself.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm taking that to the bank, I'm putting it in my pocket.
Well, I think it's coming.
Right on. One of the things I also think is really important that I try to bring up front and foremost to anybody that I talk to about this project, the intent of this plan is not to tell jurisdictions or organizations what to do. We're not here to tell you, because we found this information, you have to do this work. But what I do think is important is that folks realize that over a thousand people participated in the process, both locals and visitors, so this is a really solid repository of findings from the community about what they want to see happen. Now, as we all know, samples vary, but if, if I could say one thing to a jurisdiction or a partner organization is, if you find something in this plan that aligns with what you are prioritizing, like, let's talk about Grand Mound sub-area planning and what you guys are trying to do there, maybe there are things in this process that align with that, use this plan to help leverage additional resources. As you're trying to go out and find funding sources, say, hey, not only do we find this important as a county, but over a thousand people in our community said it was important too, so, and then we can come and work with you as well. So who all was involved? We had a very inclusive and broad leadership team, the county had representation in that process as well, Jenica was there, was a fantastic partner, helped us be connected to the priorities at the county level and make sure that we understood where the county could plug in and where it was not necessarily the best fit. I will say, in terms of what is industry standard, usually you have no more than eight people on a project steering committee like this. Obviously, that was not going to work for Thurston County, we have nine communities in our jurisdiction, so we needed to be representative, plus our three tribal partners, we're all invited to that team as well, and this is who made the decisions. This is the filter. So that's an important note, because I've had folks say, well, I know this is important to you, Annette, but, dot, dot, dot. Like, no, 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 these priorities are not Annette's priorities, they're not even the visitor bureau's priorities. We collected data from the community, and then this group prioritized it.
It's a pretty good group.
It is. We had a lot of, we had a lot of active discussions with strong personalities, which I thought was exactly the right way to do it, so it was a very good group. And they met every month from September through last June, and they didn't only meet at their steering, oops, at their steering commi, gosh darn, this is tricky, at their steering committee meetings, you are not going to be able to read this, I'm gonna read it to you. This slide that's hard to read represents the process that we went through. So in the beginning, we brought our consultants in, we had them here for three days, and I created, our team created an itinerary where we called it the Warts and All Driving Tour. We took this team to some of the toughest challenged locations that we have in the county, and when I say the county, I mean the whole county, not just the unincorporated areas of the county. And we took them to our best, most exciting areas of the county, and we did that because we wanted them to have firsthand experience there, we wanted them to talk to our stakeholders, and we wanted them to see how diverse this county is, and how opposing at times our needs might be from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, so that they got a good detailed look at that. We also did a data collection effort where we spent a lot of time looking up every published plan being used in Thurston County today that we could get our hands on, so that might have been a comprehensive plan for a jurisdiction, a transportation plan, mitigation plans, water. mitigation plans, water treatment plans, you name the kind of plan. We collected over a hundred of them actively being used independently by different organizations and jurisdictions today. Um, there were over a thousand pages that were overlaid using AI to pull out what were the commonly held opportunities, priorities and challenges that everybody was working on individually, but not necessarily working on together. Um, the reason that we wanted to do that, well, first of all, we had to use AI because we would have never gotten this done. And it was an amazing tool and yay, we had an AI policy early on and I'm glad. Um, going through this process helped us make sure that even if we had the most representative steering committee ever, that we didn't come out of it accidentally opposing things that were already in place as priorities. So we wanted to make sure we were ensuring as consistent of alignment as possible with the bulk of partners as we could. Does that make sense? People start shaking usually when you talk about AI and, uh, public plans. Um, so that gave us our early marching orders. We then started, um, what I lovingly refer to as measure every single thing under the sun phase of this project. We did, um, your garden variety SWOT analysis, um, of the community. We did a, um, industry trends analysis, um, we did a, uh, retail gap analysis, market analysis. Um, you named it, we analyzed it, we tried to look at the, um, every sector that we could, um, in the community. We did a sentiment survey that went out to our local residents that are not stakeholders, that also went to our stakeholder residents, meaning people that are in the hospitality and tourism industry or adjacent to it. And then we did a visitor sentiment survey. They all got the same questions, um, so that we could overlay it and not only see what was important to these groups, but where did we have divergence in sent- sentiment? Um, I will say our locals are our hardest critics. Things that, um, the folks that live and work here, um, outside of the hospitality industry are going to feel one way. The stakeholders tend to have a little higher self-esteem about certain issues, but then our visitors come in and they're like, this is amazing. You know, it's, it's very interesting how much tougher we are on ourselves than the folks that choose to come here um, to have a, a vacation or so forth, so forth. Um, we then moved into comp set analysis. We wanted to not only understand, okay, what's the lay of the land here? But if we had a comp set for our destination that was maybe a series of destinations that we thought we have parts of that are kind of similar to us, what are they doing? Um, what are we not doing? Are there things that we're missing the boat on? Um, we looked at another comp set of destinations that was more aspirational markets, where we could see, wow, these communities are doing certain things that we're, we're pretty far off of, but we could work backward and reverse engineer this a little bit. And then we did that same process for our organization to look at other, um, DMOs, uh, that are of similar budget, similar market size, similar, um, dynamics, to kind of see how did we shore up? Um, we then moved into overlaying, oh, let me come back before we overlaid everything. Then we did the engagement piece where we had, um, we brought our, uh, consultants back. We did over a hundred one-on-one meetings, um, and industry focus group conversations in market. We then did a public forum so that residents could engage with the process, ask questions and share their feedback. Then we did the pu- then we did the stakeholder visioning workshop series. So we brought all of those fund, all of those findings back to the steering committee so they could look at everything. And at that point, we sussed out what were the things through all of those processes, and there were a lot of processes, that kept coming up time and time again. And that is where this list of 29 priorities or issues and opportunities came from. And we had a lot of conversation about, like, should we, should we just narrow the list and make it easier to, to work on by focusing? Or should we capture it all and prioritize them? And we went with the capture it all and prioritize them approach, um, knowing that if everything's important, nothing's important, we do, we did need to prioritize them. Um, we didn't want to accidentally lose some important findings by virtue of not including it in the plan. So, um, I'll review that list with you in just a minute. The important note, um, and this is the thing that a lot of jurisdictions get hung up on, is when we start looking at the priorities, we're talking about how the, um, steering committee envisioned these priorities being prioritized at a high level countywide approach. It isn't to say these priorities are going to be what the city of Olympia is going to work on and that's the same priority list that the VCB is going to work on and this is what the chamber is going to work on. That is not how this works. We're saying at an ideal, high level view, this is how they imagine them being ruled out. So, this list represents the topics that, um, the steering committee thought should be prioritized out of the gates. And you'll see a lot of opportunity for where this can dovetail with efforts that the county is already working on and things that we can work toward.
Out of the 29?
Yes.
So those are 11 of the 29?
Yes.
Quaymouth Resort Complex doesn't even exist, so why would that be?
It's about, so what will be helpful is when, um, we're going to be providing you with the, the full book, um, which by the way is 300 pages, each one of these has a full chapter. So Quaymouth Resort is talking about being a part of the planning process. Um, there's a lot of dynamics with Quaymouth, um, aside from just the relationship with the tribe, but say, for example, connectivity. How do we ensure that we don't have an island built up north that is so self-sufficient, is so self-contained that there's no reason to come back out into the county? So it's about making sure that, um, we have a seat at the table to have every opportunity to make sure.
The Great Wolf Lodge scenario, where people just come from all over, they go there and we don't get any.
Yeah.
Any reciprocity or as much reciprocity as we could.
Yeah, and just making sure that the.
So trying to get ahead of that.
Exactly, exactly.
That's our own fault, I think. Yeah, but, but that's wise of the VCB or BOB or whatever.
EOB is a VCB. Yeah, I know what you're trying to say.
Whatever acronym.
Yeah, um, so, but it's a, it's a fair question. Um, so there's a lot of detail on each of these bullet points, but for purposes of your schedule, obviously, we're not going to go into all of what those are. But, um, we will be providing printed copies of the books for you so that you can see it and it's already published on our website on our industry page. Phase two, um, obviously you're going to see things on here and you're going to go, well, this has to be worked on today. Yes, they, they really all in different regards are going to be worked on today. Um, but if we're talking about prioritizing, um, this was how the steering committee.
Aviation planning, like advocating for not having it?
It's more about, there was an active conversation and all, in multiple occurrences of the planning process where the topic of regional air service came up over and over. Like, do we want to restore regional air service, do we not? So it, just getting, a lot of these are getting ahead of things that are not necessarily there today.
We actually had regional air service here for years.
A lot of folks see this and start getting hives because they think that we're talking about the, you know, moving the, uh, the, oh, the, um, C-TAX expanded international. I'm like, that's not what we're talking about. It's not it. Um, but it was something that came up a lot through the process.
That, okay. At the Olympia Airport, having like, being able to fly to Portland from there or something.
Kind of like a, like a mini Payne Field or like what you would see in Wenatchee or, um, other smaller, kind of similar sized markets. I think we have a lot of those, um, those bones already in place. And as Commissioner Edwards mentioned, we did have that type of air service. Um, it's something that's seen in our comp markets like Bellingham, but we just don't.
And they, I mean, I ju- I would just be, I would need to be educated as to how that could create a market that connects to tourism. I mean, you're saying that.
Oh.
We had, you know, air service that we had before where tourists flying in here from. I suppose there was, not enough, obviously. Not enough, obviously.
It is a big deal. I mean, if that were to happen someday, if this community said, I, we can find a way to make this work for us as a community, guaranteed, guaranteed that would move the needle on tourism. Yeah, um, that is a key sector.
Spokane.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, I know, um, so for example, Bellingham is going through some changes with their, their regional airport right now. And the differences they're experiencing off the bat and out of area, uh, visitation and, uh, multiplier effect from those visitors is pretty profound. So, um, it would be a big deal if there was a path to that that felt right for this community at some point or back to it. Um, and the tourism funding piece is, it's certainly about our organization, but it's also, all of these projects in here are, uh, on a continuum of grandiosity, right? Some things are pretty simple and some things are pretty massive. And, um, I think it wouldn't be fair for us to say, here's all these findings of things that the community would like to see us prioritize, but then not have any skin in the game and trying to find the resources to bring these things to life. If we're going to say, yeah, the community thinks regional air service is important, um, we need to at least be supportive, um, as a partner, sharing data at a minimum. Um, and if there are projects that, um, advance from this planning process, help, um, throw our support behind it and help find fiscal resources. Um, because there's, it's not enough just to say this is what we want. Uh, we have to help be a part of the how. So phase three, or yeah, phase three, um, you start getting a lot more niche in here. A lot of people are, um, seeing equestrian tourism and saying, what are you talking about? And my answer is how much time do you have? And it's not just because I have horses. Um, if any, of course, you're in Tonino, um, you guys are out in the South County, you know exactly what I'm talking about. There is a tremendous, almost, um, to the folks that are not going into the southern parts of the county, there's an invisible tourism, um, sector that is growing at mock speed, um, that we should be a part of the conversation. Um, the amount of movement going in and out of Tonino Ranch, um, going in and out of even our North County equestrian facilities is pretty profound. Um, so I think there's a lot of opportunity around equestrian that we could, uh, without a lot of, excuse me, without a lot of fiscal resources, but more, um, combined organizational resources, we could move the needle pretty quickly on some substantial change. So my board, um, when we came back with those 29 issues and opportunities, uh, convened at an all-day retreat and, um, they did so right after the steering committee did their kind of final meeting, their retreat, where they said, as they went through the list of 29 issues, they said, um, okay, visitor bureau, these are the, the things that we think you guys can lead, like you have the ability to lead these things. Um, my board said, well, you can't do them all at once because you have a tiny team and you have no money. Um, so, you're going to have to narrow it down, sister. So, uh, the ones in orange with the asterisk are the things that they said, we really want you to add extra to, to start. It does not mean that these other things are not happening. They are all happening. Um, but that connectivity piece, that came up over and over with all of these things. Um, and connectivity can be like what we were talking about with Quaymouth, making sure that we're getting ahead of that topic to make sure that we're, we're trying to talk about, how does the rest of the county connect to this development? It's going to be the same conversation to what's happening with the Chehalis tribe, with the Squaxen tribe. Um, it speaks to the fact that even though we have a website that over 349 unique individuals accessed last year and our most visited page is our events calendar by a landslide, which is weird for a visitor bureau, I, or any website. Our community still doesn't know that it's there, like through all of these different public forum, visioning, onsite visits, one-on-ones, industry focus groups. The number of people who said, gosh, you know what would be amazing? If we just had a, like a website event calendar that everybody could put their events on? I was like, oh. It's, we have to do better about figuring out, how do we tell people? It's free and it has a tr- an insane amount of people using it. Our visitors know that it's there, but we have to figure out, how do we get our community members and our organizations to use it? We have a lot of splintered resources that if they, if folks were using one tight funnel, we would do a lot better. So that's kind of connectivity. Outdoor recreation, we have, and we have a lot of incredible scenic beauty. We have a lot, we have an equal amount, if not an increased amount of confusion about how people can access that scenic beauty. Um, obviously we have Capital Forest, folks don't necessarily know how to access it. It's not the most signed asset in the world. If you're used to, say, going to Mazama or to, like, or anywhere in the Medow Valley or by Leavenworth and you're going up in the icicle, there's a lot of signage. We don't necessarily have that, so we need to figure out how, instead of just making new outdoor rec, how do we make it easier for our locals and our visitors to access it? Sports events and facilities, that's a no-brainer. Um, sports are, um, some of our bread and butter in this community, uh, for tourism. If we could just figure out how to put a lid on, a physical lid on a large event center so that we could have a year-round rain-proof, um, sports activities, that would be amazing. However, lower hanging fruit, for example, is how do we do better, um, as an organization in understanding what our availability is? We're doing a deep audit of all of our sports facilities right now to understand precisely what our options are, but we still don't have our arms around, how do we truly understand availability? Because I can send somebody to, um, trade shows to book, um, our facilities, but if we don't have any availability, uh, to bring in those thousands of visitors, then it's all for nothing. So that's some of the nuts and bolts around that. I talked about tourism funding. Um, tribal relationships and, and tourism, I think, is going to be huge for us. In the next three to five years, Thurston County is not going to look the same. We've got some big, big developments coming down the pike. Um, and while we do have incredible individual properties, and by the way, our tribal properties are our number one, uh, tourism draw by a landslide, but they're not necessarily, because of that connectivity piece, making it out into the community. So how do we better cultivate these relationships with our tribal partners so that we can, um, understand not only how do we better market them as a regional draw, as a regional product? Um, how do we get that dispersion effect into, uh, the less visited areas of the community? And how, how do we affect tourism with actual economic multiplier effect?
Sure, we're short on time a minute, if you could.
The good news is, I think I have like one slide. Um, so these are just the things that, okay, these are the things that my board said, I want you to prioritize in addition to those priorities. Um, you got to figure out how to make more money. You need to diversify your funding streams. We can't keep pulling the same levers and think we're going to get a different result. So one of the things we're looking at is creating a C3 to pay for some of the things that like TPA assessments can't legally pay for, um, or lodging taxes. Um, for that tribal tourism piece, we're going to, um, work with Iyanta. Um, are you familiar with Iyanta? They're the, um, American Indian and Alaska Native, uh, Tourism Association and they're a great partner. I've been a member of theirs for over a decade. Um, I'm hoping to bring them into market and do a, a tri-tribal summit so that we can get those folks at the table and tell us how they would like us to serve in this capacity. Um, you can follow up and read those. Uh, I lied, that wasn't the last slide, but, haha, I forgot, I threw these in for fun. So at the end of the study.
I thought so, now I can see.
Okay, there are a whole bunch of case studies and that's where all the fun is, where you see where other communities have gone through this process, some of the projects that have actually resulted and really moved the needle in their communities. And there are things in here that you can see really closely aligned with other projects that are in the works right now, like the Ag Park. There are some really fun case studies about things that could get rolled into that, about spin-off lodging, um, projects, you name it. Um, there's some really great concepts. Um, there's no new ideas, let's be honest. We can just borrow ideas from other communities and we can learn from their mistakes and what didn't work well and also learn from the things that did. So we are, um, reconvening Q1 of 2025. The original steering committee will get invited back in, but then we're opening the door to anybody else that wants to either support or lead an initiative in this process. Um, that process is not about, you got to do this by this time. It's about, give us an update, what is happening with you? Where do you need support? Let's try to pool our resources and at a bare minimum, understand what we're all working on so that as we each learn more, that we can be a better resource to one another.
Can I throw in one thing?
Yeah.
You've got, so you've got in your initial implementation, you said these were the 11 things that were key, that is important. And one of them is arts, entertainment, life, music and nightlife. And then when you got to your like top priorities here, that wasn't there. So I guess that's a world that I'm kind of have a foot in. And when I, the, what I noticed is the people that know a lot about that sector are not usually the same people that are like a part of your steering committee. They don't sit on economic development councils and stuff. So you're, if you're gonna make an inroad, when you get to the point of wanting like bring in some people from the community that have experience, like there was a roundtable I sat at at Capitol Theater, and it was about how to make Olympia like a music destination. Yeah, you were there. People like that had a, I mean, I was writing down all kinds of interesting ideas, but those are the ideas you're gonna need to really move that needle.
So that's why when I'm talking about the, when we restart in, in January, that it's not limited to the steering committee. We're gonna be putting out a call that says, hey, we're now starting this process. If you are interested in supporting or leading this because you're a subject matter expert in one of these areas, you're gonna be invited in. But it's gonna be a matter of trying to connect with those folks. Generally speaking, we're pretty good B to C communicators, business to consumer. So I, I think we will do an okay job of tapping those folks, but we're gonna be reaching out to our folks like you for your connections. And just because it was at, because it was noted as an initial kind of high-level priority, but it wasn't on the visitor bureau's top priority list, that doesn't mean it's not prioritized. It just means that we are not the subject matter expert in that, and we need to find out who is and bring them in.
Anything, last minute question. Thanks for that. And I've seen your, your, you know, the book that Jen called me, and it's really impressive. You guys should look forward to taking a look at that. How long have you been here now?
About three and a half years.
And it took us two years to implement this, you know, the additional 2%. So government doesn't go very fast, but thank you so much for being innovative and bringing stuff to us.
You are welcome. I'm glad that it could happen. Sometimes it pays to live in government websites.
We got a fun commissioner. That's what happened.
What's that?
We got a, we got a commissioner of fun.
Is that your title?
And I gotta make light of it, because we gotta have fun at this job a little bit. It's a killer, otherwise.
Absolutely.
A lot of work that went into that.
It's crazy town. But like what I tell folks is, that was just the planning process. Now we have to start working. And so it's, what's interesting is seeing how people respond to the now we need to start doing part. So that's been pretty illuminating, but that's, I'll be back to talk budget soon, so.
Thank you.
Yay. Thanks, guys.
Does anyone need a break before we launch? Okay, let's take, we're gonna have to go late, and I don't wanna shortchange Public Defense. So let's take like a five-minute break and then we'll.
Go through lunch.
With Public Defense. Cause I confused. Three minutes.
Okay, 11:57 a.m. Back on the record with our final substantive item for this morning. It's Public Defense, State of the Department report from our Public Defense Director, Patrick O'Connor. Welcome, and floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners Patrick O'Connor, Director of Public Defense. Thank you for the time. I'll be mindful of the time as we're running over here, but this is just an opportunity to have a conversation that I try to have twice a year with the board on where we are as a department, a little bit of look back, budget, workloads, and then some things on the horizon. So love for this to be interactive, so please feel free to ask any questions as we go. And I'll try to keep it real high level, because I know it's been a long morning for the board. We'll start heading way back to when I was appointed and still sticks with leading with budget. Once the protocols of the board, and I appreciate that because it makes sense to start with the budget. So a lot of details on this slide, I just wanna highlight a couple. So what you have before you is a look back back to 2023, and I should pause for a second. That's, my apologies, I'm going a little too fast. Here today with me is Katie Venna, our Executive Assistant, and online is Jose Vargas for what might be his final appearance as our Fiscal Manager as he heads into retirement next year. But perhaps we'll see Jose one more time. But Jose's been an incredible asset to our team, has helped me rebuild the department in my eight years as the Director. He has 33 years of military experience, state experience, and now finishing out his career with the county. So thank you, Jose, for being online. If you have any detailed questions, I'll turn to Jose. But when we look back to 2023, it was a good end-of-year fiscal balance for the, for the department, remitting almost $550,000 back to the county. And the two previous years, including 2023, so in those COVID years, we remitted about $1.4 million back to the county from our budget. 2024, just highlight a couple, couple pieces here. We, obviously going through the transition with TC Connect and the budget model. So our forecasting at this point is based on historical expenditures from June. So as we make this transition right now, year-to-date, I'm not able to, and Jose's not able to forecast our end of fiscal years budget balance based on expenses from June. So candidly.
Same problem everybody else is.
Yeah. Candidly, and we are, as you know, Commissioner, a very dynamic department when it comes to budget. We have a lot of variable costs. And so, you know, candidly, I'm a little unnerved as the Director of the Department to not have that data just yet, but as soon as we get updates, I'll be sharing that with the board. Cause our forecast in June was to be about a little over 150, excuse me, 130,000 in the black for this year. So, but that's missing the past several months of expenses. So we'll continue, of course, to monitor that, and I'll apprise the budget, the budget team and the board as we get more information. Heading into this year again, you know, our budget was reduced by $389,000. You see the highlight number there is 528. We had a business application technician position that was approved by the board, but to make those cuts without me having to lay anybody off, we, we cut that position, so it was never filled in addition to the, the 389,000 that was cut from the budget. So again, I think right now, at this point in time, we're continuing to work with the budget team in the county on making this transition. It's been challenging, and I wanna recognize that, especially for Jose and our Accounting Assistant. The Thurston County Public Defense Delivery Model is unique, and I work with colleagues from all around the state. It's different from county to county on how public defense is administered. Here in Thurston County, essentially the entire delivery of public defense falls on our department. Some counties separate duties for public defense delivery. So for example, in Wacom County, their Chief Director is only responsible for assigning cases within their office. All other contracting for professional services is done by a county office, a different agency. So things like expert budget, that's not within his purview. So, but here in Thurston County, it's, it's all under my purview, which makes it challenging, to be candid, but that's just how we do business. A little bit of background there. I'm gonna move on unless there's any specific questions about our budget and where we stand. Please, Commissioner.
I have a question in regards to kind of what you just mentioned about doing it differently, right? I mean, is there ways that we could do it differently? Like, are there suggestions? And maybe that's a very loaded question for right now, and just, I know we're kind of tight on time as well. But, you know, as, as we're going through, like, are there different models that we as a board should be looking at that are better suited, maybe as we're growing, right? That maybe we should, we should look at instead?
I think what I've learned, well, I know what I've learned, is to deliver the best public defense for Thurston County, I take that on as an incredible responsibility. So there's control over how public defense is delivered in Thurston County with our current structure, right? So working with independent contract attorneys, I oversee those contracts, oversee how they're performing on those contracts. So there's, from my perspective, there's some benefit to that. Same thing with professional services. So all the public defense expenses with experts, translators, all those budgets, all those invoicing obligations, again, there's control because it's not outside the purview of our department. I will say, though, what I, what I've also learned is that we need to continue to grow as a department if we're gonna continue to keep all those obligations. So as the system gets more complicated, which it has on a variety of fronts with all the tech issues and sort of the landscape changing, there are organizational gaps to continue to keep all those obligations that, that would, that need to be discussed in terms of where they are if we continue to keep all those obligations as things get more complicated. So it's a long way of saying, there are certain times in my career where I wish I didn't have anything to do with contractors or professional services, but at the same time, it's one way that I can help guarantee that we're delivering the very best public defense for this community.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. So I'm gonna go through these pretty quick, but this is just a snapshot of our work year-to-date. As you know, we are driven by the number of court appointments we get in all aspects of both juvenile court or in our adult courts, both district and Superior Court. That's the driver of our work, that's the driver of our expense. And on a personnel level, what's the driver of personal satisfaction on our staff and stress from our staff? So if you look left to right here, this first slide just shows you how many cases we've been appointed by all our courts year-to-date. You'll see on the left, in District Court in particular, we, and this is data through the end of August. So you'll see in 2024, we are, through August, we're about to eclipse all of our appointments in 2023 for that court. Suffice to say, by the end of this month, which I think is today or tomorrow, we will have surpassed all our workload for an entire year in District Court. So that concerns me. We've had attrition in that court with defense attorneys with their caseloads. So we're monitoring that, but at the same time, we're reactive. I don't control the number of times we get in the court every day it points us, but I am responsible for managing that workload and making sure that accused have defense counsel.
So it looks like if you were to extrapolate that pace, it's gonna be more in line with 2019.
Correct. Yes.
So kind of back to pre-pandemic.
Correct. I mean, if, if the trend continues for the next four months.
I mean, I, and again, I don't, I don't wanna see rising case numbers, but the 2019 number was pre-Blake, right?
Correct.
Well, the Blake fix, so to speak, that created a misdemeanor offense for drug possession.
That's right.
So I guess it wouldn't be shocking to see District Court numbers, you know, go back to kind of, when you add in, you know, the Blake stuff.
Right.
To maybe going back to 2019 numbers.
Very well, very well could. And these numbers just reflect the number of trial cases assigned. So these numbers don't reflect all the other duties that the attorneys do, things like arraignments, first appearances, probation violations. That's a whole body of work that our attorneys do outside of these numbers. And I think you've heard from District Court recently on, you know, their challenges being down a couple probation officers, those calendars have ballooned, and to be candid, it's taken a real toll on our staff. If you look at our juvenile numbers, we're in good shape year-to-date with juvenile appointments, and we're also in good shape with our adult felony numbers year-to-date. So those numbers are right on track and where I would hope they would be. Again, there's a lot more to numbers because there's human beings, not just our clients, but our staff behind each one of these. And as you've, obviously, one of the topics right now is public defense caseloads, and I'm leaving a little space to answer any questions you have at the end of that. But what I can tell you is that, you know, the stress levels have been really, really high in this work for a long time. And so although these numbers reflect what our year-to-date filings are, we try not to max out every attorney because we will burn them out and they will resign. Commissioner.
I have a question. So as we're being presented these numbers, right? I know that, you know, all of these cases are not resolving on that full year. So how many of these cases are carryover?
These are all new assignments from 2024.
So they're just all new assignments, there are no, that's, so it's basically new assignments plus however many carryovers you have on a year-to-year basis?
Yeah. So if you're looking at the District Court numbers, yeah, of those compositions. So if you're looking at the district court numbers, yeah, of those composition, there's about 500 DUIs that we've been assigned, a little under 200 domestic violence cases that we've been assigned, about 300 private law license suspended third degree cases we've been assigned, and about 500 misdemeanors, just sort of all kind of different misdemeanors, obstruction, resisting, those kind of cases. But those are all cases that are assigned this year. Okay. We'll move to the next slide. Again, this is just a highlight of how many cases that we, in our office, have the staff capacity to assign. So we're doing a good job circling way back to eight years ago when I was appointed. We have a very specific plan. And I'm pleased to say that the numbers that we're able to assign within our department are right in track with that plan. Eight years ago, we had to send out to contract attorneys, let's say, just an example in superior court, over 50% of our cases went to independent contracting attorneys because we didn't have enough FTE lawyers. That's not the case now. So we keep a lot more cases. You see in the middle with our kids, we keep almost all the kids that don't have a legal conflict of interest. And the next slide will highlight that as well. So this isn't in a vacuum. This has been part of an eight-year strategy for the department to put us in the very best place to deliver the best public defense for the community. Next slide. These are reassignments, so I just want to highlight a couple things on this slide, which is to show the impacts of when we have an attorney resign. So if we have an attorney in our office that has a full caseload, depending on their court, when they resign or they move on, they get a new opportunity, we have 80 of their clients to reassign to other attorneys. And I say that because we've had, we've not been immune to resignations and opportunities for attorneys to move on. The impact is something that we're trying to quantify. It's not just the expense of having to go out and recruit new staff. It's the gaps in between that it takes to recruit somebody. And then the impacts, because these are people, these are clients without a lawyer that need to be reassigned to a new attorney. And that does cause delays in the court system. It does cost clients opportunities with their time with a pending case that has to pen, continue to keep pending. So there's a real impact. We work hard to obviously retain our talented staff. But, you know, we're not immune to opportunities. And we try to relieve some of those stressors, which are excessive caseloads and salary. We certainly, what I can try to control is caseloads. But again, we're very much dependent on the number of cases in which are assigned to us by the court. Okay, next slide. And this will be our conflict numbers. Again, I just bring these up because at this point in time, this is part of a long plan that we've had, which is to keep our conflict cases. Those are the number of clients we're assigned every month where there's some legal conflict of interest that ethically prevents us from representing a client. I'm really proud of this, this, this PowerPoint. At first blush, probably doesn't look that impressive. But at the same time, what I've really wanted to do over the past several years is keep a static number of conflicts for district court, which you can see are pretty static, a static number of conflict assignments for our juvenile courts. And, you know, we, we see some juvenile cases where it's maybe four or five kids and get involved in some incident, and we can only represent one. But what I'm really proud of is the incredible decline in our adult felony cases. We have worked really hard with the board's support to increase the number of our defenders in that team so we can vastly reduce the number of cases that at first blush had a potential for a conflict, but we were able to do a deeper dive and determine that they weren't conflicts for current representation, but we have a number of attorneys. Okay, next slide. Please feel free to chime in. I want to be mindful of the time, so I'll keep that staff in. Two over. Our overage assignments, that's a word we use when we have cases in one month from each court where we only have a finite number of attorneys. We do have a finite number of attorneys. And if the filings for one particular month are so high that we have to send those clients out to our panel attorneys, what you'll see here again is, is the work of our team and with, with the board's support over the years to zero out superior court overage assignments. So if you look in 2022, 23, and 24, not one case, not one case that we were assigned to by the court that we didn't have a conflict of interest that we couldn't take because of our stats. You look at juvenile court as well. You look at 2019, we sent out almost 200 kids that we could have represented but for our resources. Now I have two juvenile attorneys doing that work for our kids and something I'm really proud about. But again, you see the reflection of how many cases have had to leave our office in the past couple of years. So again, this is all data that's been part of a multi-year plan for us as a department. And so we've been very proud of the success that we've had because, again, I believe in our team. I believe in our orders. Our professional staff provide the very best public defense for our clients. Okay. Just want to give you a quick snapshot of what currently, I ran these numbers a couple weeks ago, what a public defender's caseload looks like in Thurston County. And right now, these are the average number of open trial cases that each one of our attorney, our attorneys have. You can see for district court, they have over 100 clients each. That's an active caseload of trial cases, over 100 clients. In superior court, over 80. Those are adult felonies. They have 80 adult felony clients on their caseload. And in juvenile court, because the filings this year have been down, which is great, our juvenile attorneys are averaging 33 open juvenile cases. But just to give you a little bit of perspective, now, this doesn't include the other work that goes into each one of these trial attorney's jobs. Question. There are probation violation calendars, arraignments, other things that they have to do in their work week in addition to managing a trial caseload such as this. So excellent, great. I'm moving a little bit fast, but I want to be cognizant and appreciative of your time. Hopefully, this last slide here will spark a little conversation. In 2024, of course, we strategic plan every year. These are just some of our objectives mixed in with some of our challenges. So we continue to work really hard on improving our organizational structure. Commissioner Mejia, that's back to your point or question earlier about how are we doing as an organization? We're doing much better this year with the board's support to fund a administrative service manager for our office. Prior to this, we didn't really have an office manager, and we're an office of 60 FTEs. So that's been very, very much appreciated. And staff recognize that their needs are being met more consistently. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to go through a fiscal manager recruitment for Jose Vargas's position here, probably in the next 60 days or so. One thing that I do need to make some decisions on is we have talented attorneys in our office that are deserving of promotions. So one of the challenges right now is knowing where I'm at financially with our budget and trying to reward long-term defenders with a promotion opportunity that they deserve, but it has to be budget dependent. So not knowing where I'm at with the budget right now plays a little constraint on that. But at the end of the day, to retain, and we're talking about attorneys that have been doing this work for 10-plus years, we're going to have to, I'm going to have to make some decisions. Recruitment and retention continues to be an ongoing challenge. Candidly, retention has been tough for public defenders that have been practicing less than two years. This is a different marketplace with young graduates. Candidly, as I tell them in our exit interviews, which no one likes to have an exit interview, but at the same time, one of the consistent feedbacks from about five or six of our younger lawyers that joined the department and practiced less than two years that moved on, their main reasons for moving on are excessive caseloads and salary. So I can't do much. Excessive caseloads, too many clients, and salary. So salary, right. Since we're competing with the Attorney General's Office and other even municipalities. And even though, obviously, I can't control salary, what I try to control is caseloads if I can, but very much dependent upon how many cases we get every month. And then morale, culture, everything that's controlling our controllables, which those exit attorneys have been very positive in that regard. But at the end of the day, when we're talking about the work, this, you know, when we're talking about new graduates, they, they're doing a really good job of advocating for a better work-life balance than I did and that my generation did doing this work. 70 hours a week that, you know, I did for 10-plus years just as a trial attorney is not the work-life balance that our new graduates want. And I commend them for that because that does come at a tremendous cost. It costs me personally and others around me that have been doing this work for a long time. So when we talk about caseload standards, you have to keep that in mind in that we're dealing with a new workforce that values that and is willing to advocate for that. And I tip my cap to them because they should. But again, as administering public defense, recruiting and retaining, it's a challenge. It's a challenge for us. Ongoing system implementations, again, we have, you know, not to beat a dead horse here, but, you know, we're continuing to struggle with some of the challenges from the new world of digital evidence in the work that we do. It's voluminous. We, as I mentioned earlier in our budget presentation, the board did authorize a business application technician for our office, similar to what the prosecutor has to manage this. But we had, we had to make that cut. It was either that or I lay somebody off. And so we made that cut, but it continues to be compounded. And we're not really making any momentum on making the systems work best for us. My fiscal manager and Katie at times are our sort of in-house IT staff to try to keep up, but we're not, we're not really keeping up with the demand. So we'll continue to explore options on that and try to come back to the board with a request. Next topic here is public defense caseloads. So happy to have a open conversation here with as much time as we have remaining.
Before we jump into that, was there any questions on any previous topics?
I think, well, I'll let you finish that and I'll take this question.
So public defense caseloads. You know, obviously, what's before the Supreme Court hosted oral argument or not oral argument, felt, felt argumentative at times, public comment last week here and a second public comment period coming up later in October, is the opportunity for the court to consider adopting what's been adopted by the Washington State Bar Association as new caseloads for public defense. I have my own personal thoughts on caseloads, but reading the room of the court last week is I think they have more interest on implementation of the new caseload. So we'll see where the court lands on the topic. I, you know, I've been thinking of ways, if the court adopts the caseloads as proposed, on the timeline proposed, how we might be able to do that. But I have some concerns about the timing. And so sort of more to come. All what I, the point I want to make here is that I've done this work my entire career. The caseloads have been too high my entire career. In fact, I was part of the original caseload study that led to the first caseloads that Washington adopted back in 2006 and then later adopted in 2012. What I can tell you, we're seeing recently, and this is all around the state, so I, you know, all my colleagues around the state are challenged by the same new workforce demands of, of caseloads, is it continues to drive people out of the profession. And again, I can't control the salaries. And so when young defenders or defenders that have been doing the work for a long time continue to operate at really high caseloads and the salary is the salary established by whatever county they're in, they're looking to the private sector to say, well, if I'm going to continue to expend this amount of energy and time of my life, then my salary should be higher. And I, I don't, I don't fault them for making those decisions. But at the same time, I see it as a real opportunity for the longevity of the career. Understand, there's a lot of challenges in implementation, but I don't see how public defense continues in the state of Washington without some modifications to the standards given, again, our, what my observations are from new graduates from law school wanting to get into the work. It's, it's a different, it's a different workforce. So with that, one other thing I did need to mention, it ties directly into budget, is in administering public defense, I have to work with private defense counsel on contracts every year to take those conflict cases and all the cases that you see in the data. We have not adjusted our conflict counsel's compensation in five years. Right now, we're getting beat out compensation-wise for that work, which is mandatory, it's constitutionally mandated, and we ethically can't represent every client. We're getting beat by Lewis County, Grace Harbor, Mason and Pierce. Their compensation is much higher than what we're paying. Again, I haven't adjusted that compensation in five years. So I'm set to reissue contracts in the next handful of months going into 2025. It's tough right now, again, for me to forecast what those impacts are going to be if I make adjustments, but I feel compelled to make adjustments because contractors are telling me I can no longer work in Thurston County because I can go to the neighboring county and make 150% more for the same work. And that's just the reality.
Class C felony contract?
Thousand dollars.
It's a flat rate?
Yes.
I thought, I thought you were doing some flat rates, but you were still doing some hour.
We're doing a hybrid. Yeah, we do a hybrid. So we pay $90 an hour for a Class A. And our neighboring counties are well over 125 for the, for that rate. So we're just, we're way behind market. Again, which makes sense, I haven't adjusted the rates in five years. And so five years of.
Five, well, and when we did adjust, I was here when we did it. And it hadn't been adjusted in like 20 years at that point.
Been adjusted in 20 years.
And we did a 50% increase, but it was still way under.
Still way under.
This is what we could do. And then that was like pre-inflation and all that kind of stuff.
The past five years, as you know, inflation has been astronomical, cost of living, et cetera. So I'll continue to have those conversations with internally and then with the budget team, but I'm going to have to make some adjustments because, again, this is some of the challenges in administering all public defense for Thurston County is that is my responsibility of contracting with these necessary professionals and competing in a local marketplace where we're lagging behind. Probably not the news you wanted to hear, but it's the reality I face in delivering it.
Questions from the board? Commissioner Edwards?
Back on page nine on the average number of clients per attorney.
Yes.
Are we kind of, because we're overloaded, we're kind of self-perpetuating the problem because of the reality of if, if we had adequate attorneys, maybe the settlement could come quicker. But because we don't, one side is kind of having advantage over the other? Do you see what I'm talking about there at all? Where it just seems like it's not balanced outright, almost like your wage structure that you just commented on, on your defense attorneys? I mean, I don't know how any of them are staying here, to be honest with you, especially when the private sector is up around 400 bucks or better an hour or something, you know?
Well, I think, you know, again, so it, it, you know, doing our works are calling. It's a calling to public service. It's a calling to represent individuals that are indigent. And so that's never going to change. That's, that's, that's who we recruit. That's who applies to public defense. And they know they're coming into public defense to not make the money they would make in a private sector. So what the opportunity presents itself with caseloads is to continue to recruit those who are of that character, that consider the work to be a calling, but provide them a more manageable caseload so we don't stare at numbers like this. Part of the challenge is because each one of those clients is owed every ethical obligation a defense attorney has for a particular client, new cases that are assigned to each one of those attorneys, they have to spend X amount of hours on each case. And so right now, our standards would say, you know, for a district court case, that client's owed four hours of attorney time. Four hours, that's all each one is accounted for, for that case assignment. And that's soup to nuts. That's from hi, nice to meet you, to trial, four hours.
Where's that number coming from?
Our current standards in Washington.
And then what about superior court?
11 hours for a felony.
So that's why I had a question because, you know, as a former practitioner, it's been 20 years since I was a full-time public defender, but district court and juvenile court look, don't look out of whack to me. Superior court looks out of whack. And, you know, just what you were saying, if that four to 11 is the right ratio, and I'm not saying it is, but even that's more than two times as much time required.
Right.
But, but they're not, but they only have like 20% less cases.
Right.
So that superior court number is way too big.
There's a lot of factors that go into this, you know, that I can't quantify all of them, to be candid. But what I, what I can say is this, this is what the standards are trying to address. I mean, they're trying to address, how do we make these open caseloads more reasonable? And as an administrator, I'm trying to make them more reasonable so people have greater longevity in the career.
We used to, in my office in Fairbanks, Alaska, we used to shoot for, we used to shoot for the 90s. But we were doing an equal, I was doing felony, like felonies, misdemeanors, child in need of aid dependency, juvenile, I was doing a cross-section of every part of the office. So I would have, you know, maybe 60 district court cases. And I'd have maybe. So I would have, you know, maybe 60 district court cases and I'd have maybe 20 superior court cases and then maybe 10 Chinas and stuff. So I mean, to be carrying 82 superior court felonies, that seems really.
And that's an average.
Seems impossible.
It seems impossible. And that's an average, right? So, you know, it's, it's an average of our entire team, right? So some may be higher because they're getting more complex cases or there's just a whole host of factors in there. But again.
I don't care if those are C felonies, though that's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. Um, but again, I think what the standards are trying to address is a, is a lot of different reasons behind what's being proposed, but the reality is, um, that's not sustainable for a career. I mean, it's just not. And that's why we see people leave the career because, um, you know, it's not sustainable. And so we'll, we'll, again, we'll continue to see how, um, what's being proposed progresses. I think that, I think, again, this is, this is Pat speaking. Uh, my read of the court is that they're inclined to really consider some, uh, adoption of the standards, but on a modified, reasonable, uh, timetable for implementation. Okay, I know we're probably way over, so, you know, these guys probably want a lunch, uh, um, but unless there's anything else.
No, I was just going to say that I think the board gave direction for, um, county manager to, to work with staff on drafting a letter for that implementation piece of things of like, because that was my read too, uh, from just that public hearing. And, um, just based on the suggestion from Justice U at the end of that hearing, it was like, well, give us actual recommendations. And so it was like, okay, well, I think that's the direction we need to start going in.
Happy to work with the county manager. I have, uh, some recommendations on, on that as well. Thank you for your time and, um, thank you for giving me the full space here. Appreciate it.
Good presentation, Pat.
Thank you.
And we're at the end of the agenda, so we're adjourned.